The United States of America, and as we a republic, we are a stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the great justice of Christ.
Did we get a chance to look through this?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion if you pass. May 28th minutes.
Okay. All in favor of passing the May 28th minutes? Say aye?
Aye.
Alright. Citizens input, any person may speak up for the three minutes on any subject of concern provided that is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission, and is not already on today's agenda, or scheduled for a future public hearing. Total time allotted for citizens input shall be 15 minutes. Speakers are required to complete a simple form giving name, address, and subject available in the community development department's office prior to 9:00 a.m. Just a couple few minutes here before we get into our first item then. Oh my god. Rick, what's gonna happen when the hitch start being more protected? Is it gonna stop everything?
We don't know just how bad yet. Certainly gonna change a lot of projects. The approach we take to them, and how long it takes to process them. Even these water system projects.
Is there a timeframe?
We need to develop a plan over the next, I think we've got about a year and a half of fish and wildlifes involved in their healthy. Kind of taking the leadership and outlining that plan, or is trying to, or actually trying to help.
Again, do you cope with any of that scale and accounting?
It is real concerning.
Pretty challenging.
You know, we're not sure how it's gonna affect like the pressure for many issues at all. Whether we're gonna need to do additional environmental review for all these docks and piers. You know, which is, most of it's pretty simple, right? Most of that's casually examined, it's just driving a couple of pilings, maybe not moving a big tool to use. Like, these shoreline waters is not fun. Like, that's gonna be affected, obviously, anything involving water consumption. We're near any of those hitched inner creeks. We have to be concerned about the groundwater under the influence of surface water issues.
It sounds like you're gonna have to be there.
And we're looking at that for the rework of the south end of the main water system for a less環環的 We're not too sure, we have the hydrological assessment of that, and make sure that the connectivity is not such that it's gonna impact the hitch. Hopefully, uh... Hopefully, say, we're gonna wanna do some additional study and figure out the real life cycle of these fish, 'cause it just seems like we're still... What do they do when they're out in the water? Nobody knows. Where are they going? Where are they hiding? Where are these?
Let's just go on that. Analysis, he said the shoreline wasn't pertinent. You might remember?
That was the lake, yeah, yeah. How much of it is predation versus drought and environmental factors?
You're gonna have to move the batch.
No. They spawn in the creeks in early spring. Unless they go out in the lake, nobody really knows what the life cycle is out there. Do they go out in the middle? Do they hide the tools? Do they...
Alright. We'll get started on our 9:05 public hearing, consider certification of a final environmental impact report, FDI-R, prepared for the Valley Oaks development proposal, and also consider making recommendations to the board of supervisors on GPAT-0602, RZ-0423, and GPD-0601. The project applicant is Kipco Development Corporation proposing the following. One, general plan amendment from agricultural and resource conservation to community commercial. High-density residential, low-density residential, and resource conservation. Two, rezone from agriculture to PDC-DR. Plan development, commercial designer review, combining district, TDRRD, plan development residential design, combining district, and O, open space. Three, the general plan of development to create a mixed-use development consisting of up to 380 single-family pump residential lots. A 3.54 acre medium-density residential lot, a 2.53 senior housing assisted living center facility. Public open space trails and park facilities throughout the development, and a planned development commercial area of approximately 31 acres running South State Highway 29. The project consists of 150 acres located at 18196 and 18426 South State Highway 29, Middletown, and further described as APN-01426046 and 51. This is continued for May 28, 2015, and June 11, 2015. Morning, Keith.
We're recommending that the planning commission pay through the final FDI-R and certify it if it's appropriate. Also, take action on the general plan of development, the rezone, and the general plan amendment.
Also, appreciate the continuance that provided staff, the additional time needed to sort out some of the finer details of the mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. And also, we've received confirmation from the regional board that despite the connection restriction in Hidden Valley Lake's CSD, that this project is still connected to CSD and use riparian rights that are applicable to this property. So we don't have any issues there with either sewer or water, other than if the project is allowed to move forward, the permit will begin the process with LAFCO for annexation into that district.
Any questions for staff? Okay. Same old stuff?
Pretty much the same, yeah.
Alright. Well, I have a couple of questions. First off, it goes through in the amendment about the other projects in Middletown area specifically that are, that we've talked about and were prepared, were being, going through the process either since we're already, or we're looking at that process. Of those roughly, how many of those projects would still be going through?
Yeah, most of those projects died. And the latest we have, well, let's see, one of the projects, a former of Buckskinian Road. And with the 150, yeah.
The district?
The district, thank you, sorry, there's so many names of projects. There was another one right in town, in Middletown, that was a larger development, but it's also, the maps have... The maps have either expired, or there's just no effort on the developer's parts to proceed as those were originally planned. So the overall, in terms of the cumulative impact of additional traffic to the regional development, most of those other developments are just dead in the water. And even, you know, the ones that may still be technically alive due to the state providing subdivision map act and time extensions. I believe those would still be refined projects if they were to come back. They would reduce the numbers of parcels, not just the managed parasite, but there was a thing that Mark Mitchell brought to us in Middletown that was 30 or 40 parcels, that it was too much, the road improvements are too expensive, that they're never looking at coming back and developing that as a four-lot.
Because, you know, in the environmental impact report, it's, you know, those lots were figured into the cumulative impacts on the town of Middletown and the commercial district there. Basically saying that, you know, while this is gonna have a large growth in this one area, you know, some people won't have to travel to Middletown anymore to do shopping and such. There's gonna be these other growth factors, you know, in the Middletown area that are gonna be sort of compensating for that in some way, because it's a smaller market anyway, so it doesn't need to have as many people and that sort of thing. So, um... Those are, that change, you know, obviously, this is eight years ago, basically. There's been quite a few changes in that, in that respect. So what, there are mitigating, you know, there are mitigation in here, obviously. But, is there anything? What are your opinion on that effect? That, or do you think that would...
You know, all along, it was one of the things that I think we were worried about early on when this project started to be put together, you know, about 10 years ago. We started talking with Mr. Porter about it, but, you know, the goal with the commercial development for this site is that it's, you know, support activities or commercial uses that really just physically can't fit in Middletown, don't exist in Middletown. I know, really, years' support, and we're really cognizant of the issues for Middletown. You know, last thing anybody wants to do is create a blight issue, or transplant a bunch of things that they're now operating in Middletown and even up there. So, you know, medical offices, you know, we've been talking theater, the other, there's different uses that could be accommodated at this site that just aren't gonna fit in Middletown because it was mapped out 120 years ago. It just doesn't have it. It just doesn't support it. Also, you know, as the economy comes back, you know, we expect we'll start seeing more development pressure in Middletown again, because, you know, all those properties that had tentative maps on them are still zoned appropriately and could still, you know, still could see additional development. Probably will require some upgrades to the sewer system at this point, because, you know, capacity is getting low in that sewer system. You know, it being Valley Oaks is a plan development, there's a little more flexibility in the uses and the design and how it's, you know, the range of uses, and I think the idea with this is that you don't compete directly. You try to find the services that, you know, accommodate the commercial uses here that folks are just simply going to Santa Rosa to get right now.
Sure. So is that, as far as like competing issues, that's in the future for planning if you are born as opposed to moving forward looking at individual projects?
Yeah, and that's a good point. You know, if this moves forward today, and then the board openly approves a general plan of development, you know, the supporter's still gonna have to come back through a use permit for a specific plan, plus the tentative map. And those use permits, so where you're gonna get in the real details of the specific uses. You know, be able to vet that a little more in terms of, you know, so if it's a year from now, six months from now, two years from now, we'll have a better feel for what's going on and what the needs are, you know. If retail's proposed, what kind of retail? You know, how would that fit in?
And the other question I had was about the emergency services and such. You know, when it's fully developed, we're gonna have to get another fire station in there, how is that gonna be paid for?
I, the most, applicants have had a number of meetings over the years with the fire department. I believe there's a special assessment.
We offered an additional assessment on all the projects.
Sure.
I can order, yeah. We've had numerous meetings with fire departments, South County, Cal Fire, which should agree, and I think there might even be a letter somewhere. Application from them where we all agreed, we agreed both to do an additional assessment. It's $10 per house per month, and 10 cents a square foot for commercial space, leased commercial space. And like you said, it's over and above the current settlement that's on there. It was estimated that we generate a build-out somewhere between $75,000 and $80,000 a year to the fire district.
Cool, thank you. Public input, do we have public input on this?
Yes.
Good morning. I'm Larry Chandler, resident of Hidden Valley Lake. And concerning the Valley Oaks project, I'd like the board to consider some of the important consequences if it goes through. I'm not against progress, but why can't we have progress that's positive, instead of progress with serious negative consequences? If the board's interest in promoting tax revenues influences your decision, please consider that what is gained will be likely taken away by the need for increased county services, police activity, social services, court costs, and incarcerations as a direct result of the demographics which will be created by this densely built, unsecured, and ungated community. Restricted to over, to 55 and over-olyn, will the developer be legally bound to adhere to this restriction? And how many of the dwellings must be allocated for that demographic to qualify as a retirement community? Can buyers become landlords? What legal assurances will there be to restrict proposed dwellings from becoming rental units? How will landlords be restricted from calling tenants preferred gifts as a loophole to allow renting? What is the timeframe for the six stages? What assurances will be in place so that all six stages will be completed on a timely basis? What will the legal consequences be, if any, if the timeframe is not met? There are 474 actual living units consisting of 380 tightly clustered homes, a 53-unit apartment complex, and 41 medium-density dwellings. The mostly high-density proposed for this site will very possibly not be attractive enough to the 55 and over buyer. What will the consequences be if the developer cannot sell to enough of the 55 and over demographic? Why are there no drawings or floor plans available? Should we be concerned that it may be a minimalist architectural design? Remember that the developer will not be living there. Traffic is already excessive for existing roads. More traffic will create even more accidents, especially in Highway 29 navigating over Mount Selenia. Currently, Caltrans is taking transition accounts with indicators at several locations, as well as before and after Hartman Road and the soon-to-be-built roundabout. I suggest the board of supervisors wait until these traffic accounts are reported in order to make a more informed decision. Is the development ripe for this area? Some say it reminds them of the urban blight and tenant housing and clustered homes that they moved away from because these areas are a magnet for crime. In 1951, as a seven-year-old, I remember my dad started taking me from Yucaya to beautiful Clear Lake to fish. In the 1960s, I came to water ski on the lake, and was always in awe of this unspoiled area. Now I am retired here. How can we stop, or at least, at the very least, change the direction of the decline of this beautiful area? In my opinion, as well as many others, the Valley Oaks project would perpetuate Lake County's decline and imploding. What kind of legacy will the current board of supervisors leave for our next generation? Will it be a legacy that our children will be proud of? Or will a foreword phrase resonate from the South County to the supervisors' chambers stating loudly, what were they thinking? Thank you for your consideration.
Hi, I'm Lauren Chandler. And I just wanna say, I have now been retired here for four years in Hidden Valley Lake. And I couldn't hear very well what they were saying, but I kept hearing Middletown, Middletown, Middletown. Well, Hidden Valley Lake is very concerned also, because some of the proposed lots are going to butt against Hidden Valley Lake. And they're gonna be the high-density, small lots and large lots. We're still going to be impacted, even though we're a gated community, because they're not gated. And we have a school, yeah, it's gonna be an elementary school, that's a very close spot. And my big concern is the high density. I can see progress, and I could see maybe a little bit of commercialism and low density, but the high tiki-taki house density has been pretty light on that whole pristine area. And my other concern is people that live in Lakeport and this area, when they wanna go to the big cities, so to speak, where I used to live in Santa Rosa, they take Highway 20 and the freeway. People that live in Lower Lake, in Valley Lake, Middletown, we pick the treacherous mountain road on Highway 29. It scares me to see how many houses are proposed. You double that with cars, and don't say 55 and over people don't drive. I'm almost 10 years older than that, and I see myself driving it to my 70s and 80s. And right now, it is so treacherous for me, and it's gonna be treacherous for everybody else. High density in that area is a big mistake.
Make a pull-up, 8.32nd Street, presenting Kim Kerr Development. Just in terms of rebuttal, what you have today is kind of the master plan. What you will have next time around with the use permit is the details of the project. But I just wanna state that this is a planned unit development, it's planned to fit together. We have 19 acres of open space, heavily landscaped, and you'll get all the design details with the use permit. So it'll be, certainly be a project you can be proud of. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Yeah, I'll bring it back up to the board. Any questions, further questions?
Mr. Chair, maybe just for the public record, maybe I can just... Just for the record, the, we don't look at this overall as being high density. This is, you know, more smart growth concepts and mixed-use development and open space. And 150 acres with, you know, you're looking at an average density of three units per acre on this site for residential density, which is very normal for typical single-family development in Lake County. General plan actually allows for five units per acre. And in these circumstances, this is well under that, like most other major subdivisions we've seen in the past, that they average right around three. So we don't think it's high density, you know, when we're looking at that.
Maybe you could also talk briefly about the walkability concepts, and the concepts of having the virtual sites.
Yeah. Right, and so the developer is proposing sidewalks separated from the streets with meridian planting on the main roads through the development. The green belt, the creek corridor, that'll be landscaped with trails through it, and connecting the residential area to the commercial. They also will have linkages, I believe, to the golf course, is that, that's the plan? Sorry, that's going, I'm sorry, I'm gonna stay away from that. Okay, my apologies. But they have a, you know, an internal trail system, a mix of uses. It is supposed to be 55 or older age-restricted. You know, nobody can, I'm not aware of, you know, the county cannot impose restrictions on people renting their homes. Now, that's something that can be addressed through the CCNRs for the development to some degree. But that's something that needs to be addressed as part of the CCNRs, which your commission will review during the use permit phase for specific plan for, for residential development. And those are, you know, there are certain land rights that we all have when we own a home, and can't just say, no, we don't want people to rent there, or we think the crime's gonna go up if it becomes rental. Well, and then why isn't that imposed on Hidden Valley Lake or any other development in the community? So I think it just needs to be fair about that system.
Okay. Thank you.
Any one comment?
Sure.
I'll open the public hearing.
I know it. For the record, I wanted to address the issue of the golf course, 'cause I've got some calls relative to that. We have no connection and no agreement with Hidden Valley for golf course access. The only, the only access our project has with Hidden Valley is an EPA location up there that, right, is primarily gonna serve Hidden Valley in the event some catastrophe happened there. But we don't have any golf course agreement. We do have a couple of lots that front on the golf course, and up here on that, there's not an option.
And also, a key component that was resolved early on in the design stages of this proposal was to align the rear yards of the homes on this development more to the rear yards of the existing homes in Hidden Valley Lake. That way, you know, look in the back, those lots are configured to line up, so you don't have an existing home in Hidden Valley Lake that is sharing the backyard of, say, two-part, you know, two lots on the Valley Oaks.
The subdivision's gonna be all single-story houses, and those lots that you bought out against Hidden Valley are elongated. They're longer, a little more depth than the other lots in the subdivision. And a green belt. Green belt.
I guess one last thing to maybe briefly talk about the traffic says. We did do traffic says as far as our EFS for Middletown, all the way from Highway 20 all the way to Zuck County Line. Built, what, two years ago? I guess?
Yeah.
Far from Middletown, right?
Yeah, it hasn't been that long.
And so, my understanding that those factors have been taken, and that's why there's a redesign with the roundabout and such like that, so there were extensive traffic says, and that were independent of this project, that were incorporated.
That's correct, and in coordination with this project too. So the roundabout design here dovetailed with Caltrans designs, designs that I think that filtered down to the roundabout.
Right.
Yeah, it's been doing this on both sides.
Thank you.
If I made a little comment about the roundabout?
Come on, please, and...
I just wanna say, these studies have the traffic metering before the fact. If anybody just does the math internally, the houses, and then double that, people have two, three, and four cars per house. That roundabout is gonna be, you watch, in a few years, a lot of it taken out and put in actual stoplight. The traffic noise and the traffic, just, just close your eyes and do the math with all those houses. Once everyone is in, and multiply with the cars, that's going to create the blockage. It will be a tragedy in Hidden Valley Lake and Lake County, and we'll probably all have to start smoking our cars like in San Jose County.
So, Hidden Valley Lake, for comparison, has approximately, I believe, it's 1,400... 4,000 homes there now. This project's coming in roughly 9%, 10% in full build-out, and Hidden Valley's still got maybe 400 lots. Population is about 6,500 right now. Just to kind of keep comparison, this is not doubling Hidden Valley Lake as a retirement community. It's expected that, the real issue has been the peak traffic flows during the morning and evening commutes. Caltrans has designed that engine, designed that roundabout to corp, you know, to address that, to accommodate those peaks. This project is not expected to add much to those peaks because it's a retirement community.
Excuse me, Hidden Valley Lake is not a retirement community.
Excuse me, please don't interrupt.
Yeah, that's not what I said. So this is the retirement.
All right, thank you. I'll offer the back.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that the planning commission have certified that the environmental impact report prepared for Valley Oaks Development properly located at 1-8196 and 1-8426 South State Highway 29. And Middletown has been completely compliant with CEQA and the state CEQA guidance.
Second, all in favor of certification, the final ER. Say aye.
Aye. General plan amendment approval. I, I offer the resolution that the board supervisors approve the general plan amendment.
Second, all in favor of approving.
No, no, no.
Oh, I'm sorry. Aye.
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 Rezone approval. I move that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the environmental effects of this rezoning and set forth in the environmental impact report, which has been prepared for this project, and that the planning commission recommends approval of the proposed rezoning applied for by Valley Oaks Land and Development Incorporated, when properly located at 1-8196 and 1-8426 South State Highway 29, Middletown, for the reasons listed in Exhibit 1, findings are valid.
Second, all in favor of rezone approval. Say aye.
Aye. General plan of development approval. I move that the planning commission has reviewed and considered the environmental effects of this general plan of development, and set forth in the environmental impact report, which has been prepared for this project, and that the planning commission recommends approval of it, with the reasons listed in Exhibit 1, findings are valid.
Second, all in favor of general plan development approval. Say aye.
Aye.
Note, this project will be forwarded to the board supervisors for consideration.
And we will provide legal notification of that, because we anticipate that ballpark is probably about six weeks out.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you.
Hi, I want to thank you. There's anything you can do about any of this?
Oh, my God. What do we think?
Some of it actually designed differently.
I guess.
More than that, it was the sound plan, the layout.
That must be a miss. I don't know where I can get my, I can't get myself the sausage. Yeah, I like, well, there's better before yet, so.
Where's my gun?
What's that?
Where's my gun?
Oh, I get the one right here, and I get it down, up on there. Yeah. Yeah. Normally, I have a, I have a regimen, I have a, I have a, I don't know, office, so I don't, I get up early, so I go to work when I boil water, and I have a whole bar or something, I stack my carrot sticks on there, and that'll be all. Yeah, and then I go home and eat poker, how I do that. Yeah. Probably the worst thing you can do. Yeah, exactly. You know, but, yeah, a little back.
this gap in time here.
Okay, you know, we go over the planning project.
Yeah. What I'd like to start doing is keeping you a little ahead of the first, so you're not faced with an agenda, I mean, you have to fully comprehend the project and do an analysis, and then make a decision over in 15 minutes. So I want to give you a little more heads up with the kind of stuff that you're talking about and reviewing stairs as it happens, and the things that you're going to have to be making decisions on the next couple months. So at least, you know, as you drive around the county, as you're going around the spots or, it's getting pretty, and at least have some time to cogitate on the project. And some of these that we encounter, as we discussed last time, they raise issues with the current code and challenges to make decisions that are ambiguous, ambiguous place. So today, my idea is to start keeping you updated on what's in the pipeline, this little edflow, it's a heads up. And then I wanted to start again into the zoning ordinance update. You mentioned last time to start with design review and design issues, that that was an area of most concern. So I wanted to review how code currently stands, and some of these, like the general plan is raised for direction in design review and design standards. And you're going to get that in your head before we move forward with actual code changes. So we have a, a couple of ponds that are being proposed as irrigation ponds that are subject to minor and major use permits due to their size, even in agricultural zones, and with evaporation rates pretty high, and the required rate, complex grading permits. They're, they take in sometimes for minerals, and there are some, some issues associated with the, we're handling, we're generally making decisions on the next couple months. One's 25 acre feet, 25 acre foot pond, and then there's an already constructed 7 acre pond. We also have a rezone, Juan Williamson Act, APZ to TPZ. We're not sure at this juncture whether it was an error at the time of the zoning to APZ. According to the applicant, this has been under timber harvest for several decades. But this will be coming forward, too, because it is, again, a change in rezone, a change in zoning. We have the map that you see, the map you see here, and it's unfortunate this doesn't highlight a little more, is the, this is Middletown. There's an event center proposed at what we're, maybe the Middletown mansion. It's kind of an anti-valley two-story. And the reason why this is coming forward is that it's currently zoned rural residential, and it is designated land use flow density. So as an event center for weddings and such, it's going to require a use permit. The traffic has been, I guess, the issue of study right now in the initial study. The Crystal Lago has resurrected itself, and, you know, this was something that was adopted as a general plan, rezoning and a general, a general plan development, similar to what you just approved. This one was for 860 acres, and it was active, I think, in 2005. At the time, and you can see it's a fairly large project, this is Lakeport here, North Lakeport, and it encompasses a large area of land, 860 acres. The original proposals, the, for 325 resort units, 650 homes, a resort hotel, an 18-hole golf course, and various incentive other elements. This was, I believe, challenged at 1.5 Sierra Club, but was ultimately approved by the board supervisors. They have come in to amend the GDP and are, at this point, 18-hole golf courses are no longer favorable in terms of their approach to the developments, and now they want to come in and put fingers and have proposed some other changes as well. We have, the vector control group is actually consolidating, they're moving their operations that are currently in Lakeport and consolidating them to this location here off of Parallel Road to Todd Road outside of Lakeport, Pacific Kaymart. Currently, there are mosquito ponds here, and they're, in their consolidation, they would like to put a 6,600 square foot structure here to accommodate vehicles, equipment, some, some tech, some other operators, that would be technicians operating between 7:30 and 5:00 Monday through Friday. This would be, I believe, a metal building, potentially, I'm not sure of the height of this structure, maybe 35 to 50. We're in review of this in an initial study. It's zoned suburban residential, seeing a corridor. The general plan has this designated as resource conservation and suburban residential. It is at least, I believe, 400 feet currently on parallel Drive or the Steed.
It'll be on July.
I believe it's still be on the July 4th or 5th.
Yeah.
What is this vector control?
Uh, good question. I think they're primarily responsible for mosquito abatement for the lake and other areas, and that's, that's their whole job is to make sure we don't get malaria.
And what is mosquito pond?
I'm sorry?
What is a mosquito pond?
Oh, it's, so, so they've operated there for years and years. The ponds are for the raising of the fish, the mosquito-eating fish.
Oh, okay.
And so they'll raise them there, and they'll introduce them to water bodies around the county, and they eat the larvae of the mosquitoes. That site is a legal non-conforming base of operation. They've had the ponds there for years, they've had outdoor storage of equipment. So we're processing a use permit to enclose a legal non-conforming use with this building. We'll get the details to you in a couple of weeks when that packet goes out, but basically it's, I think it's under 30 feet high, and it's a big building where, you know, we have concerns about how it looks, and, you know, working to mitigate that to the extent practical for that location. But they were located on a site in the city of Lakeport for part of their operations. The city turned it down on a rezone, but their office space on the lake, and so they're, kind of in a bind right now trying to get these projects sorted.
Is this a private company?
No, they are a special district. We all pay a, but part of our tax assessment, I think we're just paying a couple bucks as property owners per year, and it goes to mosquito abatement. We have a special district.
We haven't been bitten very much, you. Yeah, so we're, we're in the process of, you know, noticing neighbors, and this will be on the 23rd agenda. We have an application in for, this is a project outside of Kelseyville, Surf Pro, their, their business is primarily in clean out of damage, fire damage, water damage, damage, demolition structures. And this is a major use permit and a general plan amendment from community commercial to service commercial, because it is somewhat of a warehouse and industrial use. The total land area proposed for...